Okay, so today we'll be reviewing chapters nine and ten. Um, right now, we're gonna start with chapter nine, safe facilities and pest management. So the chapter nine focus questions are how do you pick materials and equipment that are safe for use in food service operations? What are ways to install and maintain equipment? What are ways to avoid food safety hazards caused by utilities? What are ways to maintain your facility? What are the best ways to handle emergencies? And what are ways to prevent and control pests? So we're gonna start with interior requirements for a safe operation. So um, when choosing um, flooring, walls, and ceilings um, for your operation, you wanna make sure they're smooth and durable. Um, and the floor should have coving, so coving is like a the curved edge between the floor and the wall, and to make sure that um, no like pests, like bugs um, or any debris or food particles can get in between um, the cracks in the floor, and it makes it very hard to clean. Um, so you wanna make sure that you're using that to keep your operation as clean as possible, and then using um, when picking flooring in your own operation, you wanna make sure it's smooth and it's flat. Um, and doesn't have a lot of ridges or bumps or anything um, to make sure it's easier for you to clean. So when selecting equipment, you want to um, select equipment that is accredited by the American National Standards Institute, so that'll be AMSI. Um, so they have standards for food uh, equipment that require it be non-absorbent, smooth, and corrosion-resistant. Um, so we wanna make sure that no chemicals or particles on that equipment is gonna get into the food while preparing it. Um, the equipment also must be easy to clean, durable, and resistant to damage. So when installing and maintaining equipment, um, there are some standards that you need to follow. So um, the stationary equipment should be um, easy to clean and easy to clean around, so you need to be able to clean under it. Um, you need to be able to break it down and clean the outside pieces as well as put the inside pieces in sanitation um, or hot water to clean them off if they do end up having any food particles or anything on them. And then when installing equipment, you wanna make sure you follow the manufacturer's recommendations and check with your regulatory authority for any requirements when it comes to um, installing that equipment in your specific um, region or your specific um, facility. So when installing floor monitor equipment, it must be at least six inches high. And then um, you could also seal it to make some rebase. And then when installing tabletop equipment, um, it must be on legs at least four inches high. Um, or be sealed to the countertop. Hmm, so when you have set up this equipment, um, with all your equipment, you wanna make sure that you're in contact with maintenance. Um, so they can do proper inspections or fix the equipment if it is broken, you don't wanna, you wanna make sure you're not using any broken equipment. Um, and you wanna check the equipment regularly to make sure it is working the way it's supposed to. So let's move on to dishwashing machines. So dishwashing machines um, should be reachable and conveniently located, and then they should be able to keep utensils, equipment, and other food contact surfaces from becoming contaminated. So you wanna follow the instructions, um, the manufacturer's instructions when installing, operating, and maintaining these dishwashers. So when using the dishwashers, you only wanna use detergent and sanitizer approved by the manufacturer or the local regulatory authority as well. So you want your dishwasher to be able to measure the water temperature, the water pressure, and the cleaning and san- sanitizing chemical concentration. These are all things that are very important when it comes to cleaning, you know, your utensils, your equipment. Um, you wanna make sure it's getting all food particles off of there, um, and it's killing any pathogens that might be living on the surfaces of the equipment that you're using. So you also wanna clean your dishwasher as well. Um, there can be um, leftover food particles. There could be buildup mineral deposits from water if you have a hard water supply. So you wanna make sure that you're cleaning the dishwasher, so the dishwasher is able to clean the dishes um, the way that it's intended to, and the leftover food particles or the mineral supply buildup can really um, take away from the cleaning power of the dishwasher. And it also can react with the chemicals that are in the dishwasher, um, so they won't work as well. So when you're using three-compartment sinks um, to clean equipment in your operation, you wanna make sure they're large enough to accommodate large equipment and utensils. So whatever equipment you use, um, your sink needs to be big enough to fit some of that equipment in there um, to clean. So we talked about in a previous chapter, um, your hand washing sinks must be separate from food preparation sinks and um, equipment. Those things that you would use to clean equipment. So you wanna have your hand washing stations in restrooms or directly next to them, some um, some food service operations do have restrooms near their kitchen um, in a break area, so some restaurants will have a restroom just for employees in their kitchen use. So typically, they'll have a um, sink inside, or they'll have it right outside of the restroom. Um, so employees don't have to go out into the dining area and use the restroom there, and then come back and wash their hands again. Um, so you wanna make sure that there is a sink um, readily available for that. Um, and yeah, so you wanna make sure that there are um, hand washing stations in areas used for food prep, service, and dishwashing as well. So the hand washing sinks, like we said before, we wanna make sure they're, we'll use only for hand washing and not for food preparation or um, cleaning dishes um, or any other equipment. Um, and there needs to be an adequate space in between the hand washing and the hand washing sink and wherever food is being prepared. Um, pathogens, the, the water can carry pathogens that is on hands. So if, you know, someone's cleaning their hands or scrubbing their hands vigorously next to um, a food preparation area, that water containing the pathi- pathogens can splash on that area, and that can um, create, that, that's dangerous because it could um, create cross contamination between whatever was on your hands and then that specific um, area. So when having a hand washing station, there are some requirements. So you wanna make sure you have hot and cold running water. Um, soap in the form of liquid bar or powder. Um, a way to dry hands, so that could be either um, that could be either paper towels, um, a towel system, some people use like towels, uh, cloth towels, single-use cloth towels, um, or a hand dryer. A garbage container, so you'll only really need to use the garbage container if you're supplying paper towels. Um, because you know, we wanna make sure our operation is clean. And some people have a way to throw it out right then and there, um, after washing their hands and signage. So you need to have a clearly visible sign or poster that tells employees to wash their hands before returning to work. Um, if they were in another area of the operation with touching things and all that. So you can um, mitigate the risk when it comes to cross contamination. So when it comes to utilities and building systems in your operation, um, you wanna make sure that you're following the proper procedures and standards, um, because there can create, there can be a risk associated with these as well. So your water and plumbing, um, you wanna make sure that your water is coming from a regulated source, so the water here is obviously um, regulated by the water authorities. So the water that you get out of sink, out of bottled water, out of um, container water, like that comes in jugs, or um, water that comes from water delivery trucks, that's called potable water. So that's water that's safe to use in a food operation when it comes to um, cleaning, preparing, cooking, any, anything like that. Um, so it comes from a proof part, public water mains. Um, private water sources that are regularly tested and maintained. Um, closed portable water containers like the jugs that I mentioned, and then water transport vehicles. So when it comes to your plumbing, um, you wanna make sure it's installed by a credible plumber, um, not just, you know, oh, my cousin does plumbing, he knows how. You know, you wanna make sure that they are um, licensed and able to do that. Um, because that's a very big risk um, when having water in your operation that could potentially carry contaminants um, to the food. So plumbing that's not installed or maintained correctly can allow drink, the drinkable water um, to be mixed with the unsafe water, so you wanna prevent that from happening. So a big challenge that comes um, to water safety comes from cross connections. So it's a link between safe water and say, incandinated water, it could be like in a bucket or a sink or something. But typically, this is when you have like a hose or something connected to that water source, and then it's flowing into a sink or a bucket that create, that contains that contaminated water. So it could be um, in a mop bucket, for example. If that water is no longer flowing out of the original source, it can create a vacuum, which is called um, a backside drainage, um, which will create a backflow of that dirty water into that safe water source. So that can create all types of problems because now you can't just rinse the sink out, you can't just rinse the faucet out because there's all types of pathogens and contaminants that have gone into that faucet. So you wanna be really careful about that. Um, a way you can prevent backflow is just by not attaching a hose or anything to a faucet. Um, or you can use a vacuum breaker, so this is a device that breaks the seal of a vacuum when there's no um, flowing water coming back. So it's a little device that goes on your faucet that can um, prevent that from happening. So the only real way you can really prevent this is by just not using um, the hose at all. Um, so you wanna be able to have space between your faucet and your sink or whatever other water source that you're using on that faucet for, and that's creating, that's called an air gap. So that means that nothing else can go back up in that sink, um, and it can't contaminate your water source. So you also wanna have um, good lighting in your operation, so this helps your um, employees see the food that they're cooking or prepara- or preparing. Also, it allows them to see um, any contaminants or dirt or anything like that that's on the floor when they're cleaning or on other surfaces. Um, it's definitely very hard to see smaller things, and it's really easy to miss things when there's not adequate lighting um, in an area. So you wanna make sure that you have proper lighting in your facility. Um, and then all lights should have shatter-resistant light bulbs or protective covers. Um, accidents do happen, so we wanna make sure, you know, there's no risk of glass getting in food if a light bulb was to potentially break. Um, that's a really hard thing to clean up, especially when it comes from above you and it shatters. It kinda just like floats, the glass floats. So um, just having those um, shattered-proof resistant light bulbs or the coverings can really um, minimize that risk. So you also wanna have ventilation, so ventilation, um, make sure you have clean air inside your operation, certain moods, heat, steam, smoke, um, fumes, odors, it prevents you from having um, grease buildup. So if you don't have proper ventilation, or if restaurants don't have proper ventilation, you'll typically see they have a lot of grease like on the ceiling or on the walls, and that's what that's from. So you also wanna make sure, um, your very particular when it comes to your garbage. So garbage can create a lot of, can attract a lot of pests. So rodents, bugs, things like that, um, and then it can also um, cause odors in your restaurant, and you really just don't want that. So garbage should be removed from prep areas as quickly as possible to prevent odors, pests, and possibly contamination. Um, so if it's full, you just wanna tie it up and throw it out rather than, you know, leaving it there to sit until someone um, has a chance to take it out. So you wanna clean the inside and outside of gar- garbage containers um, frequently. So this'll prevent the contamination of food and food um, contact services. So if there are contaminants on the inside of the tr- of the trash can, you maybe put a trash bag in there. Um, and then you take it out, touch the outside of that trash bag, and then touch something else, that's automatically contaminating that area. So by having the inside of your trash back, or your trash can clean, um, you could potentially mitigate the risk of cross contamination that way. Um, so when it comes to indoor, indoor containers, you want to make sure they're leak-proof, waterproof, and pest-proof. Um, just so you know, something contaminated doesn't leak out of the trash bag or um, out of the trash bin, onto the floor, onto a different area. Um, you wanna make sure no pest can get in there, um, and to make it sure it's waterproof as well. Um, so the containers must be covered if not in constant use. So if there's a container in a food preparation area, and you know, scraps are consistently being thrown in there, and then it's been taking, being taken out, and um, a bag is being put back in there frequently, then that's okay. But if not, you wanna make sure that that is closed. Um, and then women's restrooms must also um, be covered. The trash receptacles in the stalls in women's restrooms must also be covered. So for your um, trash bag, your trash cans, you wanna make sure that um, they have designated storage areas. So they must be stored separately from food and food contact services. So this means your um, recyclable bins as well as your waste bins. And then for outdoor containers, you wanna make sure that your um, containers are placed on a surface that's smooth, durable, and non-absorbent. So asphalt or concrete are fine, um, and this is for bigger things such as your um, dumpsters, as you're throwing all this trash into, you wanna make sure those are, you know, in a good spot. Um, and then they, you wanna make sure they have lids. Um, the animals come out at night and like to get into your large containers, so you wanna make sure you're not attracting pests or animals to your operation. Um, because that can also attract smaller pests such as like rats or mice. Um, they could potentially get into your food operation. So you wanna make sure those are closed um, at all times. You also wanna make sure you're maintaining your facility, so it can cause safety and problems um, in your operation with pests or just when it comes to um, your building being sound, um, there can be leaks, uh, foundation cracks, things like that, so you wanna make sure that you're maintaining um, your operation to just kinda mitigate some of those risks. So you wanna clean the operation on a regular basis. Make sure all building systems work and are checked regularly. Make su- making sure the building is sound, so having leaks, holes, cracks um, in the ceilings, windows, floors, foundations, anything like that. Um, and if there are any of those issues, then you wanna make sure you get them fixed um, as soon as possible. Control pests, um, maintain outside the building correctly, including patios and parking lots as well. So there are some emergencies that can affect your facility. So the most common are electrical powder outages, fire, flooding, and sewage backups. Um, a lot of these things happen when it comes to like natural disasters. Um, natural disasters are occurring here in Florida um, with hurricanes and things like that, so you wanna just make sure, you know, you're uh, prepared if those things are to happen. So they are considered imminent health hazards. So whenever you have one of these things happen, it's an imminent health hazard. You wanna either correct it immediately, or you wanna close your operation to prevent injury. So by being prepared, it helps you to better um, correct it, so you're not having to close your operations and lose out um, on, you know, money or wages or anything like that. So temperature controls should also be um, considered. So this comes when there's power outages and there's um, refrigeration issues or heating issues. And you know, it could put your food in those time temperature abuse zones. Um, and you can lose out on a lot of um, things that way, uh, why, we're gonna have to toss your food. Um, physical security, so you don't wanna have anyone that's unauthorized to be in a food ser- or food preparation area. Um, they just shouldn't be there. Um, there is a lot of different reasons why they can be carrying contaminants. Um, they can be trying to harm your operation intentionally, so you just wanna be aware of that. Um, having a drinkable water supply, so urban water mains and breakdowns um, at water treatment facilities are a risk to the safety of your food because the water can carry contaminants. Um, if that does happen, so you wanna make sure you're paying attention to things like that that are going on in um, your local area. Um, so if the risk of any of these problems is significant, you must stop um, the production of your food just to um, make sure that there's no pathogens being introduced. Um, and then your food service operation is still safe. Um, to produce that food. So managing pests, um, if you do see any signs of a pest, you wanna make sure you're calling your pest control operation immediately. Um, so there is a really great danger of pests being able to spread disease rapidly. Um, so if you do see a pest, or if it's a rat, if it's a roach, if it's, you know, flies, if it's anything, um, it's very uh, important that you take care of that immediately. Um, there can be a lot of cross contamination from them touching different things, um, getting into food that hasn't been used yet. Um, from flies landing on different things, um, introducing pathogens to that certain food or that area, so you wanna make sure that you're being especially aware of that. Um, so you wanna deny pests access to the operation. You want to deny them food, access to food, water, and shelter. And then you also wanna work with a licensed pest control operator, which is a PCO. So to deny them shelter, um, you can really do this by cleaning um, and eliminating their food supply, so this can destroy the eggs. This can, by cleaning up, you can um, be removing trash that they might be living in or under, so you wanna make sure you're doing that. Um, by throwing out garbage, um, storing your garbage or recyclables in clean um, pest-proof containers, um, storing all food and supplies correctly, and cleaning up food and beverage spills immediately, so that will cut off from their food supply. So you also wanna deny access, so pests can either come into their oper- into your operation on their own, or they can be brought into your operation. So last week, one of the things we talked about was deliveries. It might be last week, it might be the week before, but we talked about um, checking your um, deliveries when they're brought to your operation. So we wanna make sure we're checking for any pests, um, any bug legs, any um, notification that a pest might have been in um, that truck with the food, there will be no gnaw marks on it or any holes, things like that, so we wanna make sure we're looking for those. Um, we are getting the deliveries, um, and that'll um, stop the pest from coming in with the deliveries rather than them just coming in themselves. Um, so then you also wanna make sure that if there are any points where pests can't access the building, like um, doors, you wanna make sure that the doors are hitting the floor um, or have a guard underneath the door, so you know, bugs or anything can't get underneath. Um, or if there are holes in this, the in the walls or in ceilings or, not ceiling, the windows, um, or anything that you are able to patch those up immediately. Um, so whenever you are um, in contact with pest control, um, you wanna make sure that you're notifying them of everywhere that they could have come in, um, so they do leave signs letting you know they're there. So if you're looking for a pest, you wanna see if you see any dead insects, live insects, um, feces, nests, um, or damage on products, packaging, or the facility. So um, like I said, if you do see any of these, you wanna um, contact your PCO immediately. So that is chapter nine, so we're gonna go over the chapter review case study. So Maria, the manager of Franklin's Tavern, arrived at work at her usual time. A delivery was being checked in by one of her employees. The cooks are prepping for the lunch rush. Today would be a busy day, so Maria greeted her employees and went to her office to try to get some paperwork done before the lunch rush. Tom, the person receiving the delivery, knocked on Maria's door. He explained that some of the boxes he checked in had gnaw marks and insect wings. He went on to say that the cooks needed these food items for the lunch rush. Maria told him to accept the delivery. Maria finished her paperwork at ten forty-five AM. She walked through the kitchen to make sure everyone, everything was coming together for the lunch rush. Numerous light bulbs were out, so she asked one of her employees to replace them immediately. She also no- noticed a pile of garbage stacked by the back door with the back door popped open. She quickly shut the door. Maria washed her hands and went to throw out the single-use paper towel, but there was no garbage can. Now she began to smell a strange odor and noticed a puddle of brown liquid around a floor drain. The orders started coming in for lunch, so she would have had to take care of the problems later. So what did Maria do right?
What did she do right? She did quickly change the light bulbs.
Hmm.
That's one of the things, um, she did wash her hands after she had shut the door, she turned back around and she washed her hands. She used a single um, use towel.
Hmm.
Um, I can't see if anything else today was busy day. Um, they received the delivery which was wrong, uh, cuz they seen some weeds, but I don't see anymore right.
So the other thing she did right was when the doors popped open, she closed it to prevent the pest from entering the building.
Yeah, then she washed her hands, okay.
Okay, so what did Maria do wrong?
Um, she allowed the receiving employee to continue to with the delivery due to rushing for lunch.
Hmm.
Um, she also noticed the pile of garbage which should have been taken out immediately. Uh, that smell might have been coming from the plumbing. I mean, she didn't stop to get maintenance or anyone to do that. She just continued going forward where it brought a smell, and I'm pretty sure the restaurant could smell it.
Right, um, so she also should have um, checked to see what the brown liquid on the floor could have been, um, cuz it could have been um, a risk to the safety of the operation.
Yeah.
Alright, so let's move on to chapter ten. And chapter ten is our final chapter, and this is cleaning and sanitizing. So the focus um, questions for this chapter are gonna be what are the different ways of sanitizing and their requirements for each? How and when should surfaces be cleaned and sanitized? How should items be washed in a dishwasher or a three-compartment sink and then stored? How should cleaning tools and supplies be used and stored? And how do you develop an effective cleaning program? So we're gonna start with cleaning and sanitizing. So cleaning removes food and dirt from the surface, um, and then sanitizing reduces the pathogens on the surface to the safe level. So when you think of cleaning, you wanna think of um, all the larger physical contaminants that you could see, and then when sanitizing, you wanna think of the uh, microscopic biological contaminants that you can't see. Um, so that's a way to think of the bo- of both of them. So when using cleaners, you wanna, you wanna make sure they're um, stable, non-crosive, and safe for use um, in your operation, so this can be detergents, degreasers, de-limers, and abrasive cleaner, uh, cleaners. Um, so when you're using them, you wanna follow the manufacturer's guidelines strictly. Um, and then you only wanna use cleaners for that, their intended purpose. So you don't wanna use one type of cleaner in place for another. Um, because some of them don't have the same intended use, but if they do have the same intended use, that's fine if you switch them out. Um, typically, they just have like a different um, brand name or something like that. Um, but they're used for the same thing, so it's fine to use. So there are a different, a few different ways um, that you can sanitize items. And um, food contact surfaces must be sanitized after they've been cleaned and rinsed. So um, it's not enough to just clean the physical contaminants off of any equipment. You wanna make sure you're eliminating all pathogens that can exist on that equipment as well. So you can um, sanitize your equipment with heat, so soaking them in hot water. And you wanna make sure it's at least a hundred and seventy-one degrees Fahrenheit. And it must be submerged in the hot water for at least thirty seconds. So you can also do, you can do this in a um, in a sink, Or you can also do this in a high temperature dishwasher that doesn't use any chemicals, it'll use heat to sanitize. So you can also use, um you can also san- sanitize chemically, so um. You can soak them in a chemical san- sanitizer solution, or you can rinse um sprayer swab all of your items. So you can use um chlorine, iodine, and quaternary and sodium compounds, um these are also known as quads, so. These are chemicals, so they are regulated by state, local and um federal E P A. Agent, well E P, the E P A. Um, so you can also use two sanitizer blends to sanitize detergent and sanitizer. But you definitely have to uh check the manufacturers descriptions and requirements when using those. So you do wanna make sure that your sanitizer is effective, so there's some ways to do that and some factors that go into making sure. That the sanitizer is effective, so you wanna make sure it's the right concentration, um too little sanitizer can make it weak. The concentration weak, um so it won't sanitize it, and then too much um. Might make the solution too strong and unsafe, you wanna make sure there's at a, at the correct amount, because you don't wanna have um sanitizer left on the dish. That might, you know, end up in someone's food or um make someone sick. So you wanna to make sure it stays um concentrated, you wanna make sure you're changing the solution when. The water looks dirty or if the concentration is too low. And then you also wanna check the concentration often, um to make sure that it's at the correct amount. To make sure, to keep those uh uh the equipment clean essentially. So you also wanna make sure you have correct contact time, so the. Sanitizer must make contact with the object being sanitized for a specific, a specific amount of time, and that's called contact time, so. Um some might be for thirty seconds, but you wanna check with the manufacturer of the sanitizer that you're using for the proper contact time. Um water hardness can also affect how well a sanitizer works, so um this was talked about a little bit earlier, so that. Tells you how many minerals are in your water, um so you wanna work with your supplier to identify um. The concentration of minerals in your water that you're using in your operation, and then how much sanitizer to use. Um for your particular area. And then you also um. Wanna be aware of the water P H, and this can also affect the sanitizer. So you wanna work with your manufacturer to um see the water P H. In your area and the amount of sanitizer that you wanna use in your concentration to make sure that it is cleaning um any equipment you're using. So to clean and sanitize surfaces, you wanna follow um the steps. Detailed in the book, so you wanna scrape or remove food bits from the surface. You wanna wash the surface with a cleaning suit solution um from an approved cleaner. You wanna rinse the surface with clean water. You want to sanitize the surface with the correct sanitizing solution, um prepared per the manufacturer's requirements. And then you wanna allow the surface to air dry. So when you clean and sanitize, um all, you wanna clean and sanitize all food contact surfaces. Um after their use, before or after working with a different type of food, so we wanna. Um eliminate cross contamination this way by cleaning and sanitizing surfaces. Um so after handling raw T C S fruits and vegetables, um. Anytime there's an interruption during a task and the items being used may have been contaminated, so if you stop and you move to something else. You wanna come back and um sanitize those items and then move forward with what you were doing again. Um and then after four hours, if items are in constant use, so if you're constantly using a knife to cut something up. Um such as chicken or um vegetable, something like that, you wanna make sure you clean and sanitize that knife, um. To eliminate the growth of pathogens on the knife. So it's a clean and sanitize stationary equipment, um so you do want to clean your equipment as well. Um you're using this every day in your food operation, so there can be um. Hooked on food, spill food, things like that, um and this will eliminate from pests coming into your operation, um. Just because they're not gonna have a food source um in your operation, so you wanna unplug the equipment. Um take the removal parts off of the equipment and wash, rinse and sanitize them by hand, um and if. The equipment pieces are small enough, you can also run them through a dishwasher. Um you wanna wash the equipment surfaces, so the surfaces that aren't big enough to or aren't small enough to come off and go into a sink. Or dishwasher, you still wanna make sure you're cleaning them with a detergent and then going back rinsing them and sanitizing them as well with a cloth. You wanna rinse the equipment surfaces with clean water, um and then sanitize, um and then allow all surfaces to air dry. So that includes anything that you wash in the sink or the dishwasher and anything you washed by hand on the equipment itself. And then you wanna allow everything to air dry before you put it back together. So when cleaning um equipment in your operation, you can use a dishwasher. So there are different kinds of dishwashers, we have a high temperature machine or a chemical sanitizing machine. So the high temperature machine uses um hot water to clean and sanitize, so. If the water isn't hot enough, the items won't be sanitized, but it's too hot. Sometimes it can potentially bake the item, like bake the food onto the equipment, so you wanna make sure that, yeah. So you wanna make sure that um your water is at the correct temper- the correct temperature. So to make sure that um your equipment is being sanitized, the final sanitizing rinse must be at least a hundred and eighty degrees Fahrenheit. So when you use a dishwasher, um using this method, you must be able to. Um record the temperature of the water inside, um so some temperatures. Or some thermometers take the highest temperature, so that's a way you'll be able to tell, if it's not reaching that um. Highest temperature, you'll wanna get it fixed or get a new one. So there's also um chemical sanitizing machines, so um. They clean and sanitize items at a lower temperature, but they do use chemical components in that machine. To make sure that your um equipment is getting um clean and sanitized. So when you're operating your dishwasher, you wanna make sure the machine is clean, um clean as often as needed and check it at least once a day. To make sure there aren't any large food items or um mineral buildup in the machine. Um you wanna make sure you're filling the tanks with clean water and making sure detergent and sanitizer dispensers are filled as well. And then you wanna prep the items before you clean them, so before you put equipment into the dishwasher, you wanna make sure you're scraping off. Um any larger items, um you can rinse the dishes or pre-soak them if needed. Um if there's anything like really just stuck on there or baked on, you can do that before putting it in the dishwasher and that um. Will give it a higher chance of coming out clean. So we load a dish rack, um you wanna make sure that the water will reach all the surfaces, um and you never want to overload a dish rack. Uh the food won't get or the equipment and the dishes won't get clean, um if the water can't reach. Every surface of equipment, um so you wanna air dry all the items. You don't wanna use a towel, um because it could contaminate the items again, um. And these contaminants, you won't be able to tell or see, so um. You just wanna make sure you're air dry and then make sure it air dries before you stack or put these items away. So then you also wanna monitor your dishwasher, so by checking the water's temperature, pressure. Um and sanitizer levels, you're keeping your operation safe, um so if. These aren't at the specified levels of the manufacturer, you wanna take corrective action immediately. So you can also um wash dishes manually, so you wanna use a three compartment sink if you are going to wash dishes manually. When you're washing dishes manually, you typically can't use that really hot water, um because that's how you burn yourself, so you are gonna need to use a detergent. Um clean water and then the sanitizer, so. While preparing the three compartment sink, you want to um clean and sanitize each sink and drain board. Um so the you'll, you need to make sure the water is clean that you're gonna put in there, um. Fill the first sink with detergent and water, um and it must be a hundred and ten degrees Fahrenheit. The second sink should be filled with clean water, and then the third sink should be filled with water and sanitizer. So you wanna provide a cloth with a second hand, um when sanitizing um. The items, you wanna make sure that they're in the sanitizer for at least thirty seconds. Um or however long the the manufacturer of the sanitizer, the specific sanitizer you're using, um is letting you know. So to clean and sanitize the items in a three compartment sink, there are five steps. So you want to scrape the items before washing them, um you can also rinse or soak them. Then you wanna wash the items in the first sink using a brush, cloth towel or nylon scrub pad, um to loosen the dirt. And then whatever the suds are on at the sink, notifying you that the detergent just isn't. Ha- doesn't have the same cleaning power, you want to replace that um. Detergent in that water when it's dirty, um you wanna rinse the items in the second sink. So you wanna either spray the items or dip them in the sink, so you don't have to fill up second sink with the water. You can either dip the dishes in there to um clear off the soap, or you can spray the dishes off. Um, it just depends on you, um but you wanna make sure that all of the traces of food are gone from those items. So then you wanna sanitize um the items in the third sink, so like we talked about before. You wanna make sure that you're dipping those um items into the sanitizer for the specified amount of time, and then you don't wanna um. Rinse the items after san- sanitizing them just to prevent contamination. So then you also wanna air dry items um on a clean and sanitized surface, and you wanna put them upside down, you don't wanna have any trapped water. This would include like deeper pans, um pots, glasses, things like that, um and then. You don't wanna use a towel to dry, um because again, they can become contaminated. So when you're storing um the equipment, you want to make sure that they're at least six inches off the floor. Um you wanna clean and sanitize any drawers or shelving that there will be on. Um for glasses and flatware, you wanna store glasses and cups upside down on a clean and sanitized um shelf. And then for flatware, you wanna store those with the handles up, so there's no um possibility of. A food um server, you know, touching like the prongs in a fork or the tip of the knife. Um and eliminate cross contamination that way. Um you wanna make sure that you're cleans and sanitizing any tray or carts that you might be transporting, um. Any of the tableware or equipment throughout your operation. And then for um stationary equipment, you wanna keep the food contact surfaces, um a stationary equipment covered until they're ready for use. So if you're not using them, there's no reason to just add it, um so you wanna make sure that there's no um. Possibility of contamination of those surfaces. So when using wiping cloths, um they're typically used for wiping up food spills and wiping down um equipment surfaces. Or equipment surfaces, so you wanna make sure that you are um. Using the proper, um you're doing this properly, um when using wiping cloths, so you wanna make sure um. You're never using cloths meant for food spills for anything else other than for food spills. Um, so when you're storing wet cloths, you wanna make sure that you're storing them in the sanitizer. Um it was being used, so this will ensure that the cloth is being sanitized, and then. The surface that you're wiping will be sanitized as well, um. And then you wanna keep cloths that come in contact with raw meat, fish and poultry separate from other cleaning cloths, so this can um reduce cross contamination. Um you don't wanna put anything that's just used for vegetables or fruit or something like that, dressing, um baking items. With something that's raw and can contam- can potentially um spread disease. Or um bacteria. So dry cloths, um you want to keep them dry while in use, and then. They must not contain food debris or be visibly dirty, um letting use, that's another way we spread pathogens. Um like we spoke about before, the dirty apron, you wanna make sure that there's no um potential contaminants on anything that you're using that is dry. So you do want to um clean everything in your operation, so some surfaces such as walls, ceilings. Um the top of refrigerators or different shelving, um it doesn't come in contact with food, so it's a non-food contact surface. But you still wanna clean it, um. It can have like dirt, grease, dust, um which can potentially get into food or it can attract pests as well. So if someone does get sick in your operation, you wanna make sure you're able to clean up after them um properly. So it needs to be cre- cleaned up correctly, and then your operation needs to come up with a cleaning plan. To clean up vomit and diarrhea, um this specific to your operation, however, um or wherever. You know, there's bathrooms or there are um places where there's high traffic where these incidents might occur. Um so you wanna have the proper procedures in case this does happen, um because that's a very big risk um to your operation. People that are typically sick like that, um are typically um. Going to be carrying these viruses or these pathogens, um that we talked about in the first couple of chapters, um. They can spread to other people and make them very sick as well. So when using and storing um cleaning supplies, you wanna make sure that they're stored correctly. Or they can um contaminate other surfaces or areas in our operations, so um. You wanna store them um in the designated area away from food, so sometimes this will be like in a way back corner. Or um in a closet or something, but it will be away from the food, um. Cleaning equipment typically does carry a lot of bacteria, so you wanna make sure this is nowhere near any of your preparation areas. So you wanna make sure um the storage area has good lighting, so people can see chemicals clearly. Hooks for hanging moth sprouts and other cleaning tools, you don't want them to just be sitting on the ground. Um a utility sink for filling buckets and washing cleaning tools, so. Anytime you're filling or emptying a bucket or washing cleaning tools, you don't wanna do that in a food preparation sink. Or a hand washing sink at all, that can um. Contribute to cross contamination or the spread of pathogens. And then a floor drain for dumping dirty water as um. From buckets, and that's shown in the um picture in the book, so to prevent contamination, you never clean mop, brushes or other tools. In the sinks for hand washing fruit or dishwasher, I didn't mention dishwasher, but mentioning it now. Um and then you don't wanna dump mott water and or any other liquid waste into toilets or urinals as either. Um, so when storing cleaning tools, you want to place mops in a position to air dry without foiling walls, equipment or supplies, so that's a um. Another way you can uh, the hooks are another way you can prevent that, and then you wanna clean and rinse buckets. Letting them air dry and then store them with the other tools. So we wanna use the same practices that we're using for all the other equipment by letting the thing, the. Um items air dry, um cleaning and sanitizing as well. So we did talk a lot about um chemicals when it comes to sanitizer and detergents and things like that, so. We only wanna use um approved chemicals, so these chemicals will be approved for use in a foods um food service operations. Um and then you don't wanna ever keep chemicals that are not required to operate or maintain your operation on the premises. Um if you do, you potentially run the risk of someone using it for something that they're not supposed to, and then the um. That can be a chemical contaminant um in your operation, it can get into food or other things. Um so then when you store the chemicals, you wanna store them in their original container or a container that specifies what it is. Um by its common name, so whoever is going to use. Um by its common name. So whoever is going to use that um chemical, they know exactly what it is. Um you wanna s- store it away from food, equipment, utensils, and linens. So you can space the chemicals away from other items, or you can uh partition them off from other items in the same storage area. So you do want to develop a cleaning program, a spec- a specified cleaning program for your operation. So you want to create a master's cleaning schedule. You wanna train your staff how to follow the cleaning schedule. And then you also wanna mon- monitor the program to make sure that it works for your operation. So when clean, when creating a master cleaning schedule, um you wanna list all cleaning jobs in one area or list jobs in order they should be performed. For food and non-food surfaces. So then you also wanna assign each task to an individual or um. As a certain position. Um so sometimes in food operations. Certain positions, like say you're salad bar, you're in charge of cleaning salad and everything in that area. So you have something designated to clean to make sure that it does get cleaned. You wanna specify when it should be cleaned, so. It should, everything should already be clean and sanitized as needed um on a daily basis, but then you also wanna have um. Major cleaning um scheduled when there's not a risk um for food to be contaminated. Or not a risk to slow down your service or your operations. Um and then you wanna have clear written procedures on how each item should be cleaned. Um just to make sure it's thorough and it's consistent every time. So then you wanna train your staff to follow the program, and you wanna monitor the clean, the program to make sure it's being um. Done correctly by supervising daily routines, um checking all cleaning tasks against the master schedule. Um changing master schedule as needed for any changes in the menu, procedures, or equipment. And asking staff during meetings for input on the program. Your staff actually can have a lot of um insight onto things that you may have overlooked. Um when it comes to cleaning, because they're the ones that are gonna be doing the cleaning, so if they notice something. Um you know, might not be done right, be being done right, or there is a more effective way, um you would definitely wanna uh. Think about that as well. So we are going to move to the chapter review case study. So Andy was just hired as a new general manager at the Twin Trees Family Restaurant. One of his first projects was to create a new cleaning program. He started by taking a walk through the operation. His first thought was a storage area for cleaning tools and supplies. It had a utility sink and a floor drain, but the hot water in the sink was not working. He also noticed two sets of mops and brooms stored on the floor. The storage area was small, but it was well organized and well lit. All the containers were clearly laid. Should Andy suggest any changes to the storage room, tools, or chemicals? If yes, what changes should he suggest?
Number one, since he went to the storage room first, he should possibly install some hooks. For the rooms and the mops to be securely off the floor, cuz um. And then he said it was too small, but well organized and well lit. So possibly he could probably relocate. The um storage, but I'm not sure what other spaces, but it's a consideration. He said that the utility sink had a floor drain, but the hot water wasn't working, so. You need to get maintenance in to work on the hot water and also making sure the temperature. Um would be correct. Um everything was labeled, so that wasn't an issue. All the. Containers were clearly labeled.
Right, so he just wanted to do, he just wanted to get the hot water fixed and then have those hooks to store um the mops and the brooms. So next, Andy watched Clara, a new prep cook, to see how she cleaned and sanitized her areas. Clara cut some melons on a cutting board, then she wiped it down with a cloth towel. Clara put the cloth towel and a bucket of sanitizing solution to soak while she chopped some fresh spinach. Using the same cloth towel, she wiped down the board after she, after she finished the spinach. Then she butterflied some pork chops on the same board. Afterward, Clara wiped the board a third time with the same cloth towel. Did Clara do anything wrong? If yes, what changes should Andy suggest?
Well, she did a lot wrong. The sanitation wasn't done properly on any of the um changing of. Um activities. Um I don't know about. What she did with what knife or even if the utensil she used to do the cutting was clean. She also went back and did meat. Um the cutting board was sanitized, washed or sanitized. She just used that cloth as far as I can see here. So yeah, she did that. And she used the, the cleaning towel that would only should be used for. Um I guess surfaces.
So she just should have washed, rinsed, and sanitized the cutting board um before cutting the melons. Um before chopping the spinach, and then before butterflying the pork chops, and then after butterflying the pork chops. So these are all different types of foods, so she, she wanted to make sure that um she's cleaning and sanitizing before. Um in between these tasks. So Andy also watched many other staff members perform cleaning and sanitizing tasks that week. With the help of some senior staff, Andy created a master cleaning schedule. What steps should Andy take to make sure everyone follows the master cleaning schedule?
Number one, um she should ask for their input. Number two, she should also have a in that plan on how often would she be training or revisiting or reviewing the plan. Um that she comes up with. Um just making sure it was accessible for all employees to know.
So she also wants to train staff on the um cleaning and sanitizing tasks. Um she wants to. Supervise daily cleaning routines as well, just to make sure that, you know, they're doing it correctly, and then she wants to check all um. Clean tasks against the master clean schedule daily. In addition to all the things that she said already. So that is it for serve safe study sessions. That is nine and ten.